And so with that in place, we spent pretty well all summer adjusting our plans and working through it. And coming up with a roast plan in what we'd call phase two of of the of the planning phase where we would have in-person learning with a hybrid model, using social distancing masks, no large groups to stop spread from person to person. And and other things, not eating lunch together and those sort of things. Second part of that, which is very crucial to the health department and Lurmer County Health Department was cohorting. Is keeping kids together and not exposing them to over three or four adults a day. Also not exposing them to each other. That cohorting allowed us to contact trace. And was able to hopefully, if there was an outbreak or a potential outbreak even, that we'd be able to quarantine very quickly, isolate that that group, which may be very small group, and continue on with learning. And so that was the whole planning we spent in the summer. We have bought all the protective equipment and gear and we stacked up on our procedures. We have re-aligned our teaching staff. And many things to to provide the best education for our students' experience that we could under those guidelines. And I think it's a very good plan and I think it is a very safe plan. And I think that at some point it is going to be a great plan that we need to go to. Unfortunately, recent events on July 30th, the Colorado Department of Health released a long-awaited guidance on what would respond if a student, a teacher, or a other staff member had a probable case. This procedures created a significant and almost nearly insurmountable disruption to our school. It, if you read through those, if there was a suspected case, it would challenge a lot of, a lot of our thinking and what we are doing. We also, by spreading out our our teachers and what we were doing, we did not have a lot of room to adjust. So if one teacher was suspected even of having COVID, it could shut down four teachers, which probably we would not be able to run. This ongoing and numerous changing would have a direct impact of us being in our school and also the lack of substitutes. So that was a concern as as we quarantine under those guidelines, that it would be very difficult to have a long, sustainable time with our students that was predictable and 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 able to maintain any security. A second thing that also came out is conflicting science. There is more science now that maybe young adults, maybe a larger spread, a chance of spread than it was before. Again, that's contradictory, but it is something that is sort of an unknown. And then, of course, we, our teachers and administrators worked very hard. They had some very appropriate concern about safety of themselves and of course their students. Our teachers, administrators have worked through many of those, but it is a concern and and some of the adults in in town as well of what this is going to look like. And although we worked through our infinities too of working out many of those concerns, it is still a concern that is there. And from, and then yesterday, from our own health department, the big, two parts of that plan is having masks and social distancing and keeping people from spreading each other. Second part of that, as I mentioned before, was the contact tracing and quick isolation. Yesterday, I was informed by the Lurmer County Health Department that there is a real concern about getting the test back in a reasonable amount of time. Tom Gonzalez said, "We are seeing a substantial delay in COVID-19 test results from our clinical labs, including the state lab. For contact tracing to be effective, we must obtain timely tests within two or three days. The way we prevent outbreaks in our schools is to test, trace, and isolate. With cases continuing to rise, counties across the state will struggle to conduct timely contact tracing without delay in results. This is a statewide problem that has caused us to reassess our school reopening plans." So they are concerned right now, it is taking up to 12 days to get results back. And so the whole purpose of us doing contact tracing or or cohorting, the purpose of cohorting is really out the window. So half of our safety plan was less safe than what we would like it to be. And so that that raised considerable concerns within the county. And both Thompson School District and Pooter School District have decided to go remote learning because of that concern of outbreaks being caused by not being able to isolate and quarantine quickly, as well as the guidelines coming from the state on how you would do that would be very difficult in schools. So I have come up with a second plan that I'll call my Phase One Plan. So I'll share this with you, this screen here. Hopefully. So, as I told you before, we are working in Level Two Safer at Home, Greater Outdoors Plan, where we had tried to have in-person learning to the greatest extent, cohorts to the greatest extent possible, so we could trace and track, reduce exposure for all staff and students, face covering, social distancing, increase cleaning and sanitation or ventilation, and use, and again, create a remote learning academy for our students that did not feel safe here or because of health issues had another option, which we have been very successful in doing. Now, I would suggest that we also need to look at a second option, which is more of a stay-at-home sort of thing, since we cannot do some of the tracking and tracing as we expected to do in Phase Two. Now would be cloud remote learning for all. Still opportunities for one, one learning in small groups. We would have the ability to meet the needs of our students that may have disabilities or ELD learners or be able to meet 504 requirements and also even work with the community, understanding that we have needs in our community for childcare and those sort of things, internet access. Everybody has their unique needs and we would definitely have the ability to work in those unique needs and try to provide the best education for all. So that is, you know, what we're really looking at at this point is because of the new information. We have been using the science and the guidance from our Lurmer County Health Department and from the State Department, the science from that. I can't, I don't think we can pick and choose what science we decide we like and don't like, even though there is contradicting science out there, I suppose, but we want to make sure that we stay, you know, what's best and safest for our students. By moving back to online, it would look different than it did before. We learned a lot from remote learning. I think we did a great job in the spring, but I think we can do a much better job and we actually have teachers in training right now on blended learning. We really will make that more robust with grading and attendance and social emotional help and all those sort of things that go along with that. So I, I look forward to our opportunity to to do a great job in that phase as well. And, you know, our goal is, again, is provide an excellent educational experience every day for every child and in a safe and supportive way. And I think that both of these ways, we will be able to do that. Both of these ways are, both plans are, I'm going to be used at some point probably, whether we go in-person now, there's a good chance quarantines, we would be remote learning sometime back and forth, or if we go remote learning now and then we, the obvious transition would be back to Phase Two, which would be with cohorting and distancing and all the things that we already have in place. And in a safe manner, when institutional testing and people are on the ground to better support us to do that more efficiently. So what I would like, I'm going to have my administrative team talk a little bit about, a little bit about both plans. I do still think both plans are are very good plans, but also you know, what what that would look like, so you could better make a decision. So at the end, I would like to know if you'd like to go Phase One, which isn't a total plan. It would be starting with remote learning and working on the unique needs. Phase Two would be the hybrid model that you have already been proposed and we're still making adjustments to it as well. Or if you want me to bring back more information or give me a different direction, I am open to that as well. Again, I think that we use the science and the recommendations that we have at the time to make the best decision possible for learning, for social emotional wellness and the safety of our students. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a few questions, Sheldon. Age two, just to kind of clarify, I didn't think I've got it, but the the biggest issue is that we couldn't isolate a incident or a case or I mean, an likelihood of an outbreak, just because of lag in testing.
And there's kind of two problems. The way I understand it is that you either, you can't isolate a small group because you don't, you wouldn't be able to trace and track it and therefore that you would have to isolate large groups that may not be infected. And if two or three teachers does that, we would not be able to replace them, which shut down our school. And the also, the unknown of it is is really the problem. If you can test quickly, then they can go right there. And that's why we were having the science seats. You could say the four people around this needs tested, but the others may only have to quarantine for a couple of days. I mean, there's all kinds of different rules. There's like eight pages of rules of that. But without that, knowing within one or two days, knowing 12 days out, it really makes that an ineffective way to mitigate the outbreaks and the spread of the virus.
Right. So with the current requirements, we have, you know, one or two teachers and they're rotating to different rooms. There's an outbreak, the potential would be not only that class and those teachers, but all, every classroom that those teachers are visiting would all have to get shut down for a 10 to 14-day period perhaps.
Yeah, and and the person actually may not have the virus.
Right, yeah.
We wouldn't know.
All for nothing, right.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So if we do Phase Two, chances are we'd have to shut down the schools almost immediately after opening if there's an outbreak.
I mean, I don't know if you can predict that. I mean, if you look at trends of schools that have opened, both in other countries and even in the United States that are currently happening, there is a trend towards that. You know, we could be lucky and and not. But probably without the testing, you know, even people with symptoms would put us in in a place where we would have to make that decision without knowing whether they had it or not. And so I think it would be somewhat problematic at this time.
Thank you.
And would it be true, Sheldon, that it's sounding to me like with Phase Phase Two probably doesn't give quite as much flexibility as Phase One? I mean, Phase One, we can do, we could do inversion learning, we could do remote learning, you could do forward or virtual number of options, but Phase Two, everyone's doing remote. I would assume that that would mean we're kind of doing our version of cloud school, not forward or virtual, correct?
Um, well, I think, I think you kind of said those backwards, but because Phase One would be remote school. And Phase One would be, yes, it would be less flexibility for the most part. Right now, I mean, we would not, and even last spring, there is nothing that says that we can never have a student in-person learning. It would just be limited to as needed. We could do stuff outside, we could do smaller numbers. It just wouldn't be in school. So it would be a lot more limited than our hybrid model. Obviously, it would be more like our cloud school with with special oppo, with opportunities where needed. And then we would still have the 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 remote learning academy or the virtual school either way. So people would still have that choice. We had asked them to stay in it for a year. If they made that choice, we couldn't bounce them at in October or anything like that, but that would still be a choice as well, either, either option.
I guess the other question was going to be, I think you kind of addressed it just now, was any idea concept of duration if we went with this Phase One?
Well, my recommendation would be, Tom Gonzalez says, you know, that they are working very diligently with CSU and some other groups to try to get the testing to happen quicker. They're looking at maybe mid-September, end of September, that they will have some of those up and running. I think they have the funding, they just don't have the facilities to do it and their range and the agreements in place and the confidentiality and all those sort of things. So he's kind of put out, you know, first of October. My suggestion would be, again, one of the things that is important to school, one way or the other, is the continuity. And Phase Two, I worry about the continuity of being in and out and people having to find a babysitter this week and not a babysitter next week or we don't have the help for that. And so I would suggest that if we go to Option One, which is the remote learning, that we stay in it for a quarter. That way, we could have consistency, we could have planning and we could really get all the information and then make that decision for the second quarter at that time, depending on what the regulations and what institutional supports that we have. And so I think for continuity and us able to really get programs going, I would suggest we go first quarter. Our first quarter ends the October 9th and our second quarter begins the Monday, October 12th. So I would suggest we go to that and then we'd have a, at least till then, and reevaluate at that time to see what what makes sense.
And then in the interim, my last question at this point is, in the interim, there would be an option under Phase One, if either a child is struggling with online schooling or we have special needs. I don't know, you know, young kids K through two or something, need to learn how to run the iPad better or something. There's the possibility of setting that up in very small cohorts in a safer way as possible to help facilitate their success at online learning. Would that be correct?
I definitely want to provide those opportunities and really identify the needs. That, that is definitely possible. That is totally our choice. Our choice is any of these. We are not being forced to do any of these. So we can make whatever we feel is is safe and best for the educational learning of our of our students. I know, you know, this literally happened yesterday, so we would have to do some work on that and identify our needs and get some surveys out and see what people actually need as far as support with internet and childcare and work with our community and stakeholders on those things. That would be our, our next challenges and barriers. Our challenges and barriers were before is lunch and how to get kids places safety. Our challenges now would be, how do we provide the education that needs for students that are struggling with the online or their parents aren't in a position to support them. So that would be our next challenge. With that, I know some schools are having community schools where they will get help with that. There, there's probably some options that we could, we could possibly do there. So, and I'd be very open to that and I very would encourage that. Again, our goal is not to go Plan One, Plan Two, Phase One, but provide the best educations safely to our students. Either way, we pick.
That's probably well stated, best education as safely as possible, keeping those two in balance. That's all I have at the moment.
I feel much, a lot more confident in the Phase One, the online learning, knowing that we can help the families and the students in need. That gave me great peace of mind. That's something that has been really bothering me and hurting my soul through this whole thing is knowing that a lot of families or at least a handful of families really do need us and knowing that we can be creative and and still help them through this phase. So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to overstate and overextend of what we can do. I mean, there would have to be, you know, we have a certain amount of capacity. But definitely, we, like always, we do it every day, what in all school all the time is, is how do we address the unique needs of our community? And what can we do to do that? And and I definitely know that our teachers and our administrative and all of our staff are are willing to do what we can that is reasonable to to address those needs.
Thank you. Danielle or Kristy, do you have any questions for Sheldon at this time?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Sheldon, for all your hard work. I just want to say that first and foremost, but definitely the the safety of our children is top priority. I do worry about the gaps in education that will happen if we do have to shut down school for a week or two weeks or or anything like that. That does concern me with, you know, with the unknown. There's just so many unknowns right now, which we've been living now for months. We all know and aware, but definitely the safety and the education of the kids are are the most important. So however we can do that, will be the best, obviously.
All right, Danielle, do you have any comments at this moment?
I'm, I think for me, I've seen the new study that came out from the Journal of the American Medical Association about the new data about kids being really effective transmitters and that's really scary. Given the combination of that new data, and there's actually two studies that point to that, and the fact that we don't have testing capacity, testing timelines where we need them right now, sending kids back to school is really scary for the kids and for our staff. I also feel like as much as we all want things to get back to normal and are hoping that if we just wait a little bit longer, we'll get better news. I think that's optimistic, but I don't think it's realistic. And I think the sooner we can let families know what direction we're moving, the better, so that they can start to make the plans that they need. And I think too, you know, the message about consistency is really important. If we you know, change our minds or if we are in and out of school every two weeks because of changing conditions, that's not good for kids mentally, emotionally. It's not good for staff mentally, emotionally. So I think I'm, I would like us to make a decision that we can, you know, sort of stick with for a period of time to give everybody some stability and some time to plan.
All right. Thank you, Danielle. Sheldon, are you ready for your administrators to speak with us?
Yeah, you know, and we haven't really, you know, formalized this and and I've got to give a disclaimer. We, we started working on this yesterday, so I don't think these plans and would not expect these plans to be developed in in any way. But sort of the the philosophy and what they're hearing and what their system having in their buildings and and just, just make sure that you're you're hearing from all voices. So. So who do we want to start with? Erin, you want to go first?
Hi. Morning, everyone. So I just, you know, like Sheldon said, I can share a little bit about what we've discussed in primary and at the elementary school, both in Phase One and Phase Two. I just want to start though first by just thanking all of you on our school board for your commitment and your service, because there's having leadership and having your public service during these times are so valuable and important to us. And throughout all of our work this summer and for the past few months, I'm super thankful for our dedicated administrative team and our teaching team that, you know, our entire staff that's been working tirelessly to provide thoughtful options and provide all the measures we need to to provide excellent education to our students. So I, we are very, I'm very grateful for the culture and the support and your school board support and our resources and facilities and staffing that we're able to provide all these options and resources. We're very lucky. So, thank you. All right. So I want to dig in a little bit to both because, you know, when we talk about the why, you know, that excellent education every day, it's also that we're still maintaining our goals and our urgent need around our students' learning and our UIP goals. And those will continue whether we're in Phase One or in Phase Two this year. When we think about Phase One, I'll start there, just, you know, like Sheldon said, we've spent the past few months really digging into Phase Two and we have a big overview of kind of Phase One in the elementary school of maintaining those small cohort sizes, because we know that the number one impactful thing for students is the teacher and the teacher relationship that they have. And so we want to be able to, be able to provide that and in the small cohorts, be able to seamlessly switch into Phase Two whenever we're able to be able to do that. And so being able to do that while also providing that continuity of relationships for the families and for the students is really important to us and really valuable. So to do that, we've changed some of our staffing structures and moved some of our support teachers into some teaching roles in order to decrease our class cohort size to be approximately, you know, to be somewhere around 15, but not more than 18 students in our cohorts currently. And then with that, we feel very grateful that we're able to do that while still providing more services to students. So we'll still be able to, you know, work towards a lot of our UIP goals by having, we'll still have two dedicated ELD and reading intervention support teachers with a K3 reading coach and a we'll be hiring a reading, early literacy paraprofessional to work with small groups and can maintaining, having a reading court tutor to support our students. And then thinking about our cloud school experience and wanting to create a, yeah, I keep on calling it Cloud School 2.0. And what are we going to do this year to really provide that robust remote learning experience and heighten the expectations and the accountability for attendance, engagement, and learning for our students, including daily synchronous learning for a whole group and small group to meet the differentiated needs that students provide. We're lucky in the elementary school that our two new curriculums, collaborative classroom and Bridges, have been working, doing amazing support to give us remote learning options and resources and guidance to be able to do that well. And then also continuing to provide daily asynchronous work aligned with our scope and sequence through CSO. And we look forward to this year being able to also mix that, not just in a digital medium, but be able to provide print actual materials that a student be more into, hey, I can write and do these. I can have my Bridges notebook with me and my teacher's teaching. I can write it. I can take a picture of that and send it to my teacher. It doesn't all have to be done on the iPad and moving more into a blended environment within the home. Where we've been pursuing some more high-quality apps, feedback we got last year from parents was the need for some greater independence, things that students were able, like Lexia, I can get on, we know it's research-based. It's going to support students exactly where they are, but it's also sustainable for teachers and they have a able to teacher view, you know, monitor how students are progressing during the time when they're not together. And so, you know, we've been looking at a program called eSpark that, you know, we've looked at actually for a few years and done a lot of research on that. It's, for us, it's really beneficial because it syncs with our NWA MAP growth data. We're able to input a student's RIT score and it will target their instructional needs to to the standard level of where they need support, differentiated PK 12 in both math and reading. Along with that, this year, we expect during our cloud school experience to continue doing ongoing assessments like MAP, whether that is, you know, if we can bring students in and do one-on-one, DIBLs testing, those things that we'll still need to provide for state accountability, but also can monitor and guide our instruction and our small groups along the way. So those progress monitoring happening remotely and in person when we can. And continuing to have our collaborative PLC data discussions and monitoring our students' progress, because, you know, in the complete online environment, and particularly in the PK two world of online learning is a new endeavor for us. And so, you know, as a country, as globally. And so we really have to take it on as an action research-based. so we really have to take it on as an action research-based practice and looking at what are the promising practices that we can do and analyzing our data, what's having the most impact on our student growth and being constantly looking at that student growth as what we're aiming for of that instruction, whatever medium that might be happening in. And then continuing, like Sheldon was talking about and Laura, about providing opportunities for in-person or small groups when we can and being able to build both that relationship for, you know, we're lucky that we have some looping classrooms in elementary school, but particularly thinking about preschool or kindergartners or kids who are new to our school building and building those relationships and that foundation with their teachers and their classmates is critical for their learning. And then, you know, a big thing for us is really working, for all of us as a district, is working on the professional learning and for teachers and working, you know, we're working, like how Sheldon said about this week, we're doing PD with teachers on the blended learning environment and continuing that in our PD time before school starts and, and also increasing that, particularly in the elementary school, to professional learning with, in a partnership with families. I've been doing a lot of reading this summer about schools having designated learning coaches for a student. That could be a guardian. It could be a parent, whoever's supporting the student when they're doing their remote learning, and how do we work with parents and partnerships to help them understand what are our learning goals this week? What are our learning goals this quarter? And how can we support you of things that are going to help, you know, the parent, the guardian, the caretaker, or the older sister, whoever, help them with some tools to help our students when they're learning at home, because it's very isolating and it's hard for all of us to, to do. And then, you know, all of this comes back to it's new and bringing in our teachers into this process and our teacher leaders and saying, okay, what are our next steps? What are, how do we begin this year thoughtfully for our school communities and our classrooms, you know, taking our assessment days, taking our different things and, and making it work in the Phase One world. So that's just summary of Phase One. John, would you add anything for Phase One? That I forgot or missed off?
Yeah, maybe I'll just reiterate a couple of points if that's okay, because elementary certainly is a combined situation with me talking more from the intermediate perspective, but you, I, I'll just, just say that Erin covered a lot of what we're talking about, but we've definitely been operating under the assumption that we are working on a Phase Two experience with in-person learning until the last 24 hours. Now, with that being said, we've also been preparing for the fact that we know at some point in time we would have, most likely have to go to remote learning. So we've certainly spent some time and energy talking about that, but we've also spent more time and energy talking about the in-person piece. Now, that being said, as soon as we, Erin covered a lot of the improvements we're talking about with our Cloud School 2.0. Well, one of the, one of the, as soon as the, as soon as there's a decision that's made, we will shift our energy in a more intentional way, of course, to, to the more detailed plan of a Phase Two, Phase One experience, if that's the direction we do go. I think, just a couple of things that I wanted to mention, and Erin did to a degree, but some things we do, we do know we need to improve upon, our social, our SCL supports for our kids, social emotional supports for our kids. If we are in a remote learning experience, we need to work hard to provide some connections for our students among their peers, as well as individual supports for kids that might need it at home for certain situations. That's another area that we'll work really hard on to improve. But I guess I'll just, on top of everything else that Erin already said, say that I know that we can provide a rich experience for our kids. I know that our staff will be able to buckle down and, and, and create a Cloud, Cloud School 2.0 that is, that is, is strong and improved. And so I'm confident in that, so.
So maybe I'll speak a little bit more to our 2.0, some of the specifics to elementary school. I know that you all have heard many of our things and seen them about some of the precautions that we have been put in place with staggered entrances and exits and increased hand washing and the cleaning protocols and all of the guidance we've been given from the Department of Health and the State Department of Health and the, and CDE to minimize sharing supplies and materials and to, you know, create systems for grab-and-go meals for breakfast and lunch with eating in the classroom to provide that, those safety precautions in place for our, for our students and our staff. A lot of those take logistical measures that are a lot more, what's the right word? It takes a lot more logistical work to pull that off with having all of our students in the building at the same time. And I, we have spent a great deal of time figuring out how we can do that and have pathways of students moving so that, or when they are moving and transitioned, being able to do so safely and isolated, so that there isn't that intermixing between cohorts like Sheldon talked about. So we could limit our student and our staff exposure. You know, one of the things that we touched on in Phase One, but in Sheldon spoke about was this decrease in our cohort size and having those cohorts sticking together. And that is going to be our main thing in Phase Two of creating that cohort experiences where the students come in and they're working with, in their cohort and with their teacher to provide that safety and those precautions measures. The other thing I know that we've talked some about was the delay, the dismissal time of 2:00 PM and having a hybrid model where we can use a 2:00 PM dismissal time to maximize our staffing towards instruction and decrease some of our, the highest, the higher risk parts of the day that we might have, so that we're able to keep our students in the classroom for lunch and we're able to minimize some of the risk factors of specials. You know, when we think about a six-year-old coming to school and then they're coming into the classroom and they're staying in the classroom and they're eating lunch in the classroom and they're having specials in the classroom and they're, that's a lot of time for a six-year-old in the classroom. And we can get them outside for lunch, but the new guidance from the county health department meant staggered recesses with cohort staying outside even independently from each other, which changes our scheduling needs for our classrooms. And so thinking about the duration of a 10:15 to a 3:20 day and providing that all within one classroom for our students and our learners, and thinking about a two, just two o'clock dismissal, where if students went home at two o'clock, they could have a hybrid of instruction, taking their iPads or, or print materials home to have work and ongoing support from 2:00 PM on, or having digital specials or different options from the 2:00 PM to 3:20 time to also provide our staff with time to work collaboratively, analyze data, plan together, create some of the remote experiences that we really want to create to a high quality. One of the things we've talked about in the elementary school doing within our Phase Two model is having a blended learning component daily throughout our structure and our, in our daily schedule for all students. So within that blended learning time period, our students would be building their skills to be able to be, if should we need to go into Phase One, they've learned how to use the iPad, how to use CSO. They've built that independence to, I know what to do. I know what the different types of lessons I might experience in a blended environment are. And I have my teacher right there to support me as I learn it and do it. And it also provides us a structure in which to provide that differentiated instruction and support from other support teachers without, with also can reducing the exposure of our teachers. You know, we have support, reading interventions or ELD teachers who work across all grade levels. And then we could minimize the cohorts that they're working with in person while having them providing digital experiences that are targeted towards their students, that they can interact with digitally throughout every day. And we would hope that that would then provide that autonomy and the support that if students, if we needed to move into Phase One, we'd be able to, and students would have the systems and structures in place to be able to do that more independently at that time.
And I'll just jump in a little bit, Erin. The, so the premise that we've been operating under with any sort of Phase Two approach, which would, which would is that we still want our children, of course, to have the experience of specials of art, music, PE. And, and so we're, we've designed, we've designed a day in which our kids can still have that within their day. And if we do end up in a Phase Two with a two o'clock dismissal time, we would most likely have a literacy, math focus throughout the day in a more intensive way, and then provide a creative way for our kids to get art, music, PE as well, and maybe more of a blended environment. One thing is that with, when we talked about the two o'clock dismissal is at the elementary school, if we, to go from eight, 10 to 3:20, and the students to not leave their classroom essentially, that, we don't have a way to provide our teachers with a lunch break. We don't have a way for it to provide our teachers with planned time, because we, we have 27 individual, well, 24 to 27 individual classrooms we would be having to supervise. And that creates a serious, a different challenge for us. Originally, at the beginning of the summer, the county was, was guiding us in the direction that our kids could still travel to specials classrooms. Here at the elementary school, our planned time for our teachers is, is directly tied to our children traveling to a specials classroom. It works really well when it, when it's working, but now that they could not leave the classroom, we were presented with a different problem. Same thing with lunch. We were operating under the premise that our kids could go to the cafeteria or, and/or the gym and social distance and eat together in there, but that, the guidelines changed about a week or two ago. And so that changed things for us. So that's how we ended up going down the road of how can we possibly make this happen? And that's where the two o'clock dismissal recommendation came up for us at the elementary school with regard to that. The, the two o'clock dismissal, if we did do that at the Phase Two, that would allow for us to accomplish some logistic things, logistics that we are unable to accomplish otherwise, while still providing a fairly high percentage of in-person learning for our kids. So we felt like that was important. Some other things I wanted to mention, the physical fitness piece of it. We also believe that we want, when we move to Phase Two, that we want to provide physical fitness for our students in a more regular way. And so we're talking about creative ways to, to bring that into the, into the regular day for our students. And, and then I think Erin mentioned some of the, some of the other logistics about arrival schedules and whatnot, but, but we, we really just did not see a way in a Phase Two opening for us to create a, logistically create a day in which our, our teachers could operate in, in a way in which they have the time to eat lunch, go to the, go to the restroom and have time to do their work. And that's why we landed on a two o'clock as, as a recommendation.
John, I have a question for you. If we were to start in Phase One, that would give you enough time with the new guidelines and regulations from the county and maybe even from the state at that time. If we started in Phase One, it would give you enough time to articulate and plan for all of this, correct?
So we have
Opening.
Yeah, we, enough is a pretty relative term, right? But at the same time, we, we have a staff update meeting this afternoon where we hope to be able to share with our staff that, hey, here's where we're going. Let's go all hands on deck. And we've already done some pre-planning in the Phase One piece, because we know that that's going to have to happen at some point in time. But we've definitely spent more time and energy in that Phase Two planning. We have approximately two and a half weeks until we're scheduled to the first, the start of school. We, I know that we can, we can get things done at a very high level in the two and a half weeks if we go all hands on deck. And it's not like we're starting from scratch. We certainly have a base level that we started at back in the spring, learned lots of lessons, got lots of parent feedback on that. Now we need to provide some more consistency and, and take it to the next level. So I, I feel, I feel confident that with, with where we are as a school, that we can get that done, I guess would be my answer.
Thank you. All right. Any board members have any questions for Erin or John at this time?
No, I'd just like to say, John, you just answered one of my questions, was having roughly two and a half weeks, is that a reasonable timeframe to prep if we went towards Phase One rather than Phase Two? And with understanding that, of course, you know, we've got some baseline to work off of from the spring experience, but it sounds like you would feel fairly confident that that would be reasonable, as much as it can have in these times, to still provide the kids an excellent educational opportunity. Is that correct?
Yes, the, the missing part of that is that we have not been able, we have not recently had this conversation with teachers at a high level. So we, we will be doing that right away. Based upon what I know and where we are from a readiness perspective, we will, we, I, I believe we, we should be ready to go to provide a remote learning experience for our kids out of the gates. That being said, you know, come next week, after we dig in a little more, I might have a slightly different sentiment, but I do feel right now that we, we will be able to pull it off, yes.
Yeah. And so I would be looking at, when do we start in August, the 24th, 25th, something like that? But that would, that's, you know, looking at that kind of a target date.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
I have a question for Erin and John. I know that you've heard from your staff and your teaching staff about their concerns about their own safety, their family's safety, about opening in person. Can you speak to that for a moment?
Well, one of the, Sheldon talked a lot about this at the beginning. We've been operating under the, the idea that the primary way in which we're going to provide a, a safe environment here for our kids and for our staff is small group cohorting, among many other things, but, you know, with physical distancing and masks and everything, but the small group cohorting piece has definitely been one of the backbones of our, our planning efforts. And at the elementary school, we, we, with a two o'clock dismissal situation like we talked about, we felt like we could get our, our class sizes down to probably at 17 or so at the, at the, at the biggest. That, that being said, there are, there are, will also be other asks of teachers where they will be exposed to many more than 17 children throughout the day and, and other variables in that as well. You know, I, my, my general take on where our teachers stand with this and is that our teachers want nothing more than to be in the classroom with kids. There's no question about that. But it's a very, it's, it's very complicated. Everyone has their own individual situations that they're dealing with, both as a, as a teacher, but also as a parent in this situation, as all of us are. So I, I think there's, there's no way I could provide like an overall consensus of sentiment on this, on this topic, because it's so complicated. But I do know that, that our teachers would love nothing more than to get back to having the kids under, under our roof here. But because it's such a complicated situation, I think they also you know, are taking a step back like all of us are and asking ourselves, is that the safest way that we, as a community, as a school, should be providing an education for our kids in this, in this time? So, you know, I, I think there are, there certainly are staff members that have concerns for their own safety, but I, I can't really speak specifically about those individuals. So I don't know. You want to add anything to that, Erin, but?
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, we have staff members who have expressed their concerns, and we've been working with all the precautions that we can take together of, you know, what, how can we collaboratively work towards our goal of providing an excellent education as safely as we can with the precautions that we need? And so, you know, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, when we get there, we'll continue to do that collaboratively, because that's, you know, we need everyone to, to be together, working.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members to Erin or John at this time? All right, Sheldon, would you like to move on? The next administrator?
Sure, we'll just go up the ladder. Janet's next.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to, I'm actually going to start by going through Phase Two. Our plan that we have in place at the middle school, it's the one I think we've spent the most time on and we're, we're ready to go with. So I'm going to start with Phase Two, which would be in learning possible, in learning as much as possible that we can do. We, I feel like we have plans and procedures in place that would follow county and state health guidelines that, that we had been given. We are trying to reduce exposure for staff and students in this phase. We would have face coverings for both students and staff. That's probably one of the most frequent phone calls I've got from parents. We would be taking mask breaks as directed by the teacher. So I just, I wanted to put that out, that if kids are working independently, quietly at their desk, the teacher can say, while you're reading for 10 minutes, we'll take a mask break. So we'll be We'll be physically distancing. The classrooms here are. A little bit tight to get six feet between desks, but the health department did come through and and we measured my cohorts. Here at middle school right now are from eighteen to twenty students in a cohort. We've got our classrooms set up and ready to go. We have a teacher's zone at the front of the room. It gives the teacher six feet. To work from and those kids would be staying in the same classroom for four core classes. So in this phase two, that two o'clock dismissal really helps with a couple of challenges we were having to meet health guidelines. One of those by by doing the four core throughout the day and then. Our plan would be that electives would be provided remotely then from home really helps us with a couple of things. Our our numbers and electives in the afternoon were much higher than twenty. Partly just how electives work here and we were trying to allow kids. Out of their cohort for electives because we have kids at middle school level that are selecting band, selecting choir, and then we have eighth graders that can select. Spanish one, which is a high school credited class. So we, in in the original plan, we had electives that would have been in the building and they would have been mixing. In in phase two, what I call the two o'clock dismissal plan. By doing those electives at home, it keeps kids safe and staff safe. It reduces the exposure. For for kids and adults in the building. So. Our elective teams, our elective team this spring did really, really well with cloud school and reaching kids. Band and choir specifically, I would just talk to the guideline is twenty five feet in order to sing or play an instrument. If you can get a visual on that, that. We measured in the auditorium, if we use the seats in the auditorium, we could have six kids singing at a time. Because they'd have to have twenty five feet around them. So by doing band and choir remotely, it's it's not ideal, but it would allow kids to play and to sing and. The staff there's working on really a solid plan with connecting with kids through band and choir. Also art, P E and Spanish. So with that two o'clock dismissal, kids would get home. And there could be some synchronous learning, there could be asynchronous learning. So they may have a. Scheduled time that they meet with Ms. Rishi for art and the classes all gathered. They may have projects they can do at seven o'clock at night and then turn in the next morning here at school. So. The two o'clock dismissal really helped meet the guidelines that the county had come out with. I just want to reiterate that again, our U I P goals are still present, whether we are in person learning. Or we're in cloud school two point O, the middle school continues to be focused on culturally responsive teaching. Extended writing, math reasoning and explanation, and then social emotional learning for our students. So. I'm trying to keep along with safety, I'm trying to keep those, there are buckets here at the middle school. But a focus on those things as we move forward. Got a other, a number of other things just in place at the middle school to keep kids safe that. We have been able to purchase art supplies so that. If if kids were in an art room, they're not sharing anything. We've got recess. Balls and equipment for every single cohort. So if you're in Ms. Copeland's cohort and you're going out for recess, you stay in that cohort, you're only using those balls assigned to that cohort. So. Increased cleaning and sanitation we have in place here. We've made a number of purchases to keep, I I think, staff safe and students safe and. I feel really proud that we have come up with the Remote Learning Academy. It's been a good conversation to have with parents that are. Calling and struggling with the decision to say, you know, for some families, it might be right. It might be the best choice for them to do the Remote Learning Academy. Never really felt like we had that option for families. So. It's interesting. We don't have a lot of middle schoolers at this time that are choosing that. I think middle school is such a social time. And and those relationships with peers are developing and changing and growing and. Being in the building, I think for middle schoolers particularly is is really important. I've, you know, spoken with parents about our two point, our two phase two plan. I've spoken with teachers. And I really think like we're ready, we're ready to go if this is the direction that the board decides. We've got the additional things that the health department just came out with that make make challenges within this, but. I feel like we have a solid plan in place. So before I go to phase one, that was kind of a quick through. Does anybody have any questions about? Phase two and that two o'clock dismissal or cores and electives at middle school?
Janet, the phase two, if we begin with phase one delaying until October or whenever we. Know that it's safer for kids to be in person, everything that you explained with the phase two, that would go into effect.
Absolutely, yes. And that's what what I'm hoping for today is once the board makes a decision, whichever one we're starting in. That we have approval on both of those that we can easily roll into from two to one or from one to two and that we're ready for that. Absolutely.
And that's what I'm seeing is that we're gonna use both plans anyway, just which one comes first. Thank you, Janet. Any other board member? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. I'll just go to to phase one then, which we're all calling cloud school two point O. And and again, we were focused on it in spring, but our focus over the summer really turned to. How do we kid get kids back in the building safely? We all want kids back at school. So. In kind of shifting back, looking at cloud school and thinking about cloud school, we certainly got a lot of feedback from. Parents at the end of the school year, last school year and staff. Just again, for us, it would be higher expectations in cloud school for students, attendance requirements, grading. Assessments. Our staff has talked about having a clear and regular schedule for synchronous learning and. This spring, we 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 had just certain grade levels, we're doing things differently than other grade levels in terms of meeting with kids. I think getting that consistent across our district is going to be super important, but especially at the middle school that. If we're providing synchronous learning, if a teacher has a live session at nine o'clock and you're in sixth grade and you're doing. So many hours of that a day, we would want that expectation the same for seventh and and eighth grade. We would continue our work on our U I P goals. Obviously, our P L C work went really well during cloud school. You know, meeting over Google meets isn't the best, but it worked out really well. Full staff meetings were a little bit difficult, but our P L C meetings went really well this spring and. Teachers using that time to look at data. We really spent a lot of time in P L Cs this spring looking at. Which kids have we not seen? Who who who's gone two weeks and we've not seen or heard from them and what's our plan to connect with those kids? So. That's something I think if if we do this phase one, we've got to be really clear with everyone involved about the expectations. Around learning and being present and what that's going to look like. So we obviously have concerns about. Social, emotional and middle schoolers' mental health and. Just how to address that. We do have a new counselor here and she and I've been talking about. Plans and how to connect with kids that way. Eric had mentioned like what would some of the needs be in this? I would tell you, we are going to need to see sixth graders in this building. Maybe in very small cohorts, but an iPad, Learning Schoology, the platform where lessons take place and. Really, all of our kids, I think, would need some small amount of time in this building to even meet their teachers because even our seventh and eighth graders. They they don't know those teachers yet. And I think to connect remotely with a person you've never met and don't know is is really difficult. So Sheldon and I have just touched briefly on what could that look like safely to bring students in. Meeting teachers. We also, we rely on the N W E A map assessment very, very heavily at the middle school. I have already heard from teachers, if we are remote, they would really like to be able to give that in person. To students here in the building, again, safely with small groups, but. We need to, we need to find out where those kids are and meet them where they're at and grow them from there because we know. In the spring that not all students were engaged in learning. So for us, that N W E A assessment. Would also be important. And then I'm just hoping there is an avenue to bring in small groups of students, students on plans. Struggling students, students without Wi Fi could be here in the building in the commons. I. I'm hoping as we move, if if we're in phase one, we move forward these this next week. With formalizing that 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 would be allowed because I think it'd be really, really important for our students. So. Yeah. Questions about phase one at middle school?
Yeah, Janet, I just wanted to clarify. You talked about social, emotional learning and cultural responsive teaching. Can still be addressed in either phase.
Yes.
Of course, in person is probably the best way to do that. But you still, you have a a plan or at least a focus, keeping you you want to balance that with the safety. No matter what phase we're in to keep that up. So it is a. You at least have it as a, I don't know if I want to say a goal, if it were phase one.
Absolutely.
Phase two, of course, it would be there, it would be in person anyway, but it still would be able to be addressed in phase one. Is that correct?
I think the culturally responsive teaching we did really well with this spring in cloud school. Because we had done so much training on it throughout the school year. Marcy Kaiser was connecting with kids on a regular basis. She was collaborating with teachers this spring in terms of assignments. For our E L D students. So I'm actually feel pretty confident about that in cloud school. The social, emotional concerns me, right? So much of of that is working things out with other people and. Functioning within a group and we have so many kids that have been home secluded. And just where they're at with their mental health right now. Again, for us to not even get our eyes on those kids. Just just worries worries me a little bit. So that's when the counselor and I and the and the teachers are going to have to have a solid plan in place about. Check-ins with kids and what that looks like and and really even a a structure of a tier one, tier two, tier three, we have that in place at school. For social, emotional, but what does that look like remotely? How might you identify that a student is struggling and how do you get them connected with? If the counselor is the appropriate person, how do we do that? So we've got a little work to do on that one, Eric.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other board members like to speak with Janet or have any concerns or questions for her?
My last thing, Laura, would just be, I I don't know where the board's at with the decision. I just hope a decision is made today. I think our staff deserve deserve the little bit of time that's left and our parents deserve that time to get plans in place. So. Whatever the board decides, I think all of us are are ready to go, but the the time between now and August twenty fourth is vital for us, for for everybody.
And registration is next week.
Yes, and we will, and in some, many of you are parents of middle schoolers on the board, so you should have gotten the communication about registration, but that involves just. Ten students every half hour coming into the building very safely. With a mask and it's gonna be pretty quick. It's get your picture taken, get your iPad, you're handed your schedule. And you go out the other door. So we feel registration will be safe. We have a new registrar, but she is building schedules. So whether we're in. Phase two or phase one, the kids are going to need the those schedules to know who are their teachers, what electives did they get? So. That's next Monday and Tuesday are really important days for us and we get to get our eyes on all of our kids. So that's great.
If we go with phase one, the registration would not change, correct?
Absolutely. It's still, we still, we need it even more so because we've got to get the iPads back in everybody's hands. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, Danielle and Christie, do you have any questions for Janet?
Nope. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Janet. All right, Sheldon.
Well, Chuck, go next.
And I'm gonna defer to Ruby because she's got a little bit better. Preparation on it because I missed the meeting yesterday afternoon to be at an A D meeting. So. Ruby and I are gonna kind of tag team this. So Ruby, you want to lead, please?
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody. First of all, I just want to start by saying a few things to you guys and the parents, the teachers that are all tuning in. This is, I think, the biggest attended board meeting we've had this summer. We're gonna provide an excellent educational experience for our high school students, no matter what situation we find ourselves in, and we're prepared for it. We've been planning for this all summer. We've been meeting with our staff throughout the entire summer. We've been collaborating with them. We've been partnering them to put some time into planning for our return to in-person instruction, mostly level two. And last week, we sent to you, to the parents, our proposal for our in-person learning if we were in level two. And able to return to in-person learning. And we've held some Zoom meetings, three parent Zoom meetings to answer parent and question. Answer questions from parents and set home our plan in English and Spanish. And so. I I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on our proposal because you've been in the loop and you kind of know a lot about our level two proposal. So we've worked so closely with our health professionals at the Laramie County Department of Health and Environment. And it's it's Chuck and I feel really confident. It's a solid plan if we are able to return to in-person learning. It limits exposure for teachers and students. It has loads of virus mitigation measures. It's approved by our local health professionals and. I want to make something pretty clear while I have the floor here. So yesterday, we were devastated. To receive new information and guidance from our local health department. Up until yesterday, our guidance had been that level two is where we were. And that we would be able to open to in-person instruction because we've all been reading all over. It's a global pandemic and the areas where they're able to stop the spread and mitigate this virus, they're doing one of two things. They're either completely locking down and isolating in homes or. They're accurately contact tracing and effectively quarantining and stopping any kind of spread. Our plan is very reliant on the latter of those. Our plan is very reliant on. Accurately being able to contact trace and effectively quarantine to stop the spread. The new information we received yesterday is that right now in this moment. Our health department is not gonna be able to to do that effectively. And and so that's, that's where. That's where our heart sank. We know our families need this. They need, students need. Need to come back to in-person learning. Teachers want it. Our our high school teachers are so excited to come back to in-person learning. And we have a great plan for it. I want to also make clear that under level one. Level one presents an incredible equity issue that is gonna be an incredible challenge for us, for us as parents in our households. For us as teachers, for us as students, for us as administrators. And we're gonna do everything we can to combat that and make sure that every one of our students is receiving an equity equity in their education. And so we are, we're gonna need families to partner with us in this and communication is gonna have to be really good during this time. Because we have now in level one, if we go, if if we decide level one is where we're at. What that's gonna mean for us is that we're really reliant on that environment in the household. And being partners with that environment in the household to provide education for our students. And the environment in our whole, in our households is really diverse. And so the resources students have and the the capabilities that they have to access their education is different. So even under level one, we're gonna need some plans for outreach, for bringing students in in person, for hotspot locations or. Or internet access at our schools and safe, one-on-one or very small group environments. And so I just wanna, I just wanna know, I just want families out there to hear us that we understand the burden this presents. At home for you and. We want that communication open and we want to be partners with you so that we're able to make sure that students are successful. During that level one time. In level two and level one, we are only doing four classes at a time at the high school and here's why. Four classes under in-person instruction decreases our exposure to our teachers in half and our students. And so that's why we're doing four classes at a time. And so instead of going on that regular, the previous schedule where we had a rotating block and they were taking eight classes at a time. They're now taking four classes more intensified every day. If we are in level one, we're prepared for four classes as well at a time. We heard a lot of feedback from our parents and students that it is really hard to do eight classes in remote learning at home a day. So now we're focusing on just four. And so they will take their first four classes during that first eight weeks and they will. Because our first semester is very short, it's only sixteen weeks long, they'll take the second four during that second half of the semester. So that they're only at any one given time focusing on four classes. So that's a big part of our plan. You know a lot about our plans already. Do you have question, what questions do you have?
So many, it takes me to gather my thoughts if I shouldn't hit my microphone so quick. So it sounds like, am I correct in should ask, in stating that. It is certainly possible and doesn't address a concern from the spring for online learning. So. Trying to organize my thoughts here. Um, you would be able to do the four classes. Online or as you were in person. The online option would take into account. Then issue with online learning this spring and that it was eight classes. That's correct.
Correct. When students were learning this spring, they were balancing eight classes at that time.
Right.
And teachers were balancing six classes compared to where they balancing three with a limited, probably the number of students cut in half also.
Yeah.
I should mention too, under level one, that, and you might have seen it in our plans because we included it in there because we we were prepared for these levels and we are prepared for these level. And so we made, we're in making some changes to cloud school as far as we'll be taking daily participation in cloud school, providing synchronous learning daily during their scheduled time. And then we're going to be assigning tasks for grade, which is different from the spring. So it will be different. School will be different when when we start a couple of weeks than it was in March and April.
And then one thing we haven't, real quick, Eric, excuse me, just for a second, one thing Ruby and I haven't talked about and. And really, and it comes down to the teachers, but it would be my hope that if we we do go back to level one. That in some manner, some way, we still are able to get the majority of our kids in the building maybe once a week. To be meet with small groups with teachers in some manner. I just, I, that's one thing I think. Our teachers need and our students need to build those relationships and to get kids to follow through with work and and things. So. I'm not sure what that looks like, and some of that is going to depend on on, again, safety and and can we do it safely? It it, you know, part of me in my head, I I know that eighty percent of our high school kids are working downtown. And it, to me, it seems like they'd be safer up here, but. You know, so I just, that's one thing that's in the back of my head that Ruby and I and and really our whole staff haven't talked about, but that I would like. To try and put in place is getting kids in the building. Once a week or once every other week to to make those relationships and get that eye-to-eye contact.
We have incredible teachers in our district, and right now we're in our professional learning week and. And, you know, our teachers are so talented. I spent two incredible days on Thursday and Friday talking with teachers about multicultural education and. Social justice education and culturally responsive teaching. And we did eight hours a day of Zoom learning and professional learning together and. The ideas and innovation that they they're generating is amazing. There's no doubt in my mind that if we're in level one, we're going to be able to provide a super high quality education for our kids. I know they will be able to. And what what we'll need to do is there's going to be kids at home that are thriving in that. And then there's going to be kids that aren't. And Chuck and I are going to have to work really hard with our counselors to identify and monitor that and set up solutions. For those that aren't thriving at home in that environment and getting them in person with their teachers for opportunities one-on-one. And providing some support, outreach at home and and putting whatever solutions we can come up. With in place for those students. So that's going to be the challenge for us and our staff.
Sure. And that was, that was actually my next question. And I, there was no doubt in my mind you had addressed that in some way. I just wanted to bring light to it for everyone that's listening. And after our decision is made today, I happened to come across by chance a graduate from last year. And I talked to him and asked him, what did he think? Trying to get a student perspective as well, or a recent student. And. He said that he did struggle with online learning quite a bit and that he really needed some additional help for focus, for being held on task and all of that. And so that was going to be my next question was. How you guys were expecting to address that, knowing that this is kind of a. Last minute directive, you know, from the state that's all of a sudden saying, whoops, maybe we aren't going to go in that direction. Thank you.
Absolutely, Eric.
I've got a question for the two of you. Speaking with your teachers, I know that they feel comfortable speaking with you and giving you their concerns. What kind of safety concerns have your teachers given you and staff? About opening in person?
I I, from my standpoint, I think they're like all of us, they're a little bit nervous, you know. We all don't know what to expect for sure from it. And. You know, I I know a couple of our former students who have who've had it, but other than that, I haven't heard of a lot of people in. In my circle that have had it. But I I know they're nervous, they're concerned. There, I think the biggest concern is will the kids wear masks during class? And, you know, I I hope that. We we have that in place, that yes, we do. The expectation is that they will make, wear mask. And and I think that's the. The biggest concern that I've heard. Ruby, you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, the concerns we're hearing from our staff are no different from the valid concerns we're hearing everywhere, you know, just that. We're we're going back to to the workplace in midst of a pandemic and and that creates a lot of fear and anxiety and stress and. That's, that's so true. And it's, it's very, it's a very valid concern. Their high exposure to students was a big concern, which is why we reduced to half the classes at a time. That was probably the biggest one that came up. And then, of course, our teachers, you know, a lot of them are eager to get started because they're thinking about the college level classes they provide. And they're thinking about the AP classes they provide, and they're thinking about their students and how important it is to get back to learning. And in August to make sure that they don't miss out on that opportunity.
Excellent. Chuck, can you speak for just a moment about the Chassa decision that was made yesterday about fall sports?
Okay, so Chassa did come out with their calendar, their new adjusted calendar. So right now, we have two of our sports. There's four sports total going to work now. But our boys golf and cross-country teams would be both be participating now. Golf started practice on Monday. I think Monday he had, Coach Copeland had four out. Yesterday, after the announcement from Chassa, I think we're up to fifteen because a lot of football players have decided to golf because they can't play football. So I'm meeting with Coach Copeland at eleven thirty to talk about the numbers and how we're going to adjust that. Coach Harris with cross-country is ready to go. We're going to meet today and he usually has a team. Get away and and we're going to talk what that looks like because that is supposed to occur this Friday and Saturday. So we're going to work that out. So these two sports, the state cross-country is October eighteenth. And at that point, there will be a moratorium on athletics. And from, I was actually at an athletic director's meeting for the Patriot League yesterday when they announced this. And from what everybody understands. From October eighteenth to January third, it is a totally dead period. There is no practices, there's no anything. Then on January fourth. We begin basketball, wrestling, girls swimming. Practice and games start three days later on the seventh. Those sports will end at the end of February. The third season will be our traditional fall sports, which football practice will begin on February twenty-second, kind of weird. And then volleyball and boys soccer will run in March and April. Then the fourth season is. In May, and they're going all the way through the end of June. And that would be track, boy swimming and girl soccer involved in those. So. That's where Chass is at right now. At the A D meeting yesterday, the of the eleven schools in the Patriot League. All as of yesterday, told them that we are making decisions today, but all schools there are going in person. They have, three of them had made the decision that if they go online, they will not have athletics. So. It's something that we need to consider also is if we go online, do we allow our boys to. Play golf and our boys and girls to run cross-country while we are online. So. Yeah, that's kind of where the athletics is at right now.
Okay, thank you for that update. I know that was just yesterday, last decision as well. All right, any other board members have any questions for Ruby or Chuck at this time? No?
We'll go to Lazlo and have him. And then I'll do kind of a conclusion.
Okay, thank you. Lazlo, welcome.
Welcome, everybody. Good morning. Thank you, board, for all your 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 work on this and consider, deep consideration. I've been. In my other role as the, getting the remote learning going, I've been talking, I've talked to. Hunt, probably thirty, forty, fifty families virtually through our meetings. And just knowing this is not an easy decision that everyone's working through. So I appreciate your your time today. I'll be really brief. I think most everything that I I have to add has been covered for the most part in the buildings. I want to speak around. Our special needs students and students receiving services as well as students on plans like five oh fours and and gifted plans. Kind of what I, what I was working off of in our original planning of coming back in person was the premise of minimizing. Adult coverage because adult interaction with students as far as. If any of you know how special education works, we utilize a lot of paraprofessionals. Our teachers often are case managing two to four grade levels. And so they are in and out of classrooms, they're interacting with multiple students. And as we've worked on these cohorts. Our staffing decisions needed to change because what we were learning is that. The the number of adult contacts during the day was one of the essential pieces we we needed to watch in order to do the contact tracing and such if we were to have active cases. And so my planning around level two or safer at home was to really try to prioritize our services in the classroom. Prioritize what we could do with our general education teachers as far as with the smaller groups, providing them as much resource and support to help our. Our students with disabilities in those classrooms. And then scheduling our our paraprofessionals and our and our teachers. To minimize cohort connection. So one para may work with one group of students for the most part. So we were. Looking at how that was going to work, and it all depended, of course, on what students were were with us. And so as we're shifting now and we're we're looking at planning for the for the level one or the stay at home. One of the things that came out for me from feedback in the spring was the need for continued. Continued connection and 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 I'm really glad that we're we're including this opportunity for in-person. With our students that have disabilities, they're all receiving those on a plan. And as we meet with parents and work through their plan. Part of what we're talking about is what does it look like if we're in remote? What does it look like if we're in in person? And then working with the the families on what those services would look like. So. Having some limited in-person opportunities will help us to be able to provide a better better plan for our students with disabilities. As well as five oh four gifted in that. And our case management would, of course, be in place to work with those families and students. One of the things I did want to mention is probably the group that was really impacted. Pretty heavily is our students with high needs. So students with that are non-verbal autism, students that have very, very. Higher needs and limited capacity to work within the online environment. And we were surprised, some of them were very successful. So we had, we had some real surprises in that. But we already are building, we already started building plans for some of these students. Because we we knew either way, we were going to have to have some consistency as we returned. And within that group, we have a lot of students with health impairments and with. Medically fragile scenarios. So I already have met with three or four of our higher need students and their families this this summer. To come up with what's it going to look like in either phase for that student to receive services, knowing that they would probably not be able to come into our buildings until we have. A much better scenario with our public health situation. So we already have those plans going for for our higher need students, knowing that we have flexibility. To use small group and in-person. Locations could change. We're we're getting out of the box. We may be meeting on a student's porch. You know, we're thinking through, how do we get that engagement, but also keep that student safe and our and our staff, of course, we want to make sure they're safe. And. So that's kind of where we're at. The planning is going to be case by case and individual. I do have some ideas that I'll be working with the principals on. If if we do start in the remote learning to help improve engagement with our students with disabilities, in particular, learning disabilities. That might be struggling with some of the remote delivery. So. Think I'll leave it there because I I know you got a lot to still do. So unless you have any questions, I'll I'll stop there and. Go from, go from there.
All right. Thank you, Laz. Any board members have any questions for Laz at this moment? All right, Sheldon.
Hey, I'll try to sum this up and and put it in in perspective a little bit of what what we have. As you can see. We planned for total one hundred percent trying to get some sort of safe in-person learning. We knew we planned there because somewhere during the year, whether it's August twenty-fourth or October twelfth or January or whenever, we know that we will be. Back in in-person learning and we will have all these safety measures in in place. The safety measures and dedication and the response that our principals and teachers have been to address those. Those concerns have been amazing. And but we kind of look at this as a, I don't know, a lot of you probably have milk cows, but your milk cows, you have a three. Three-legged stool. And so if we look at the three-legged school stool, one leg is exposure, right? So not having large groups, not staggering times to come in, not not moving people into huge elective classes of sixty, those sort of things. We can do that very well. We did that great. And I think that we have one hundred percent safe plan in that position, especially if we did the the hybrid and the two o'clock release and and some of those things. The second part of that is person-to-person exposure by keeping distancing and masks and and keeping small groups. That is very well taken part of, is very well, and we've done amazing job there as well. And it feels totally safe. All those are under control of our school. We can make those adjustments as we need. The third part of the stool is the one that's either not there or at least shaky at this time, which concerns me. And it is probably as far as a community, the biggest impact. And that is that if we are not able to identify that, that's. That COVID quick enough, it leads to outbreaks. Outbreaks is two or more people with the same same. Position that got it, right? So one person gave it to someone in in that category, which expands. And then, of course, the community spread. That is where really outside our control. And also, it isn't probably that that person will get it at our school. They'll probably be outside, get it and bring it to our school, right? That is very common is what's happening. In restaurants, you don't get the COVID in the restaurant because some of the workers get it somewhere else and then bring it to the restaurant, which shuts down and tracks everyone else. And so we have, you know, twelve hundred kids and one hundred fifty staff here. And so without that leg there that can control outbreaks quickly, isolate people quickly. And could lead to community spread, which would lead to shutting down businesses and everything else. I I think that that is the concern. And that is the community spread, the outbreaks, and not being able to identify them quick enough to slow them down or stop them. Could be very devastating to our community. The other stuff, I am one hundred percent solid that we're safe and ready to roll. That one, there is concern at this time, and I think that's what we happen to value, not only for our school but our community. And so. And again, that is not really out of our control. And again, that is not really out of our control. There is nothing that we can do. Um, other than know exactly where our kids are and I, and be able to know that if we have that information to be able to track very quickly. And we have that in place as well. So that, that is really the, the concern that I have. Um, we are, as we built our programs, as you can see, we. Built them to be very flexible in and out and be able to do online very well, as well as in-person very well and hybrid very well. And so while we choose as far as education, I think we will do a great job. Um, I guess the bigger responsibility is do we have uh, the correct information to make sure that we can keep our students, staff and community safe? So that's it.
Thank you, Sheldon. Any board members have any questions or comments for Sheldon at this time? No? All right. I know that everybody's waiting her vote uh, for where we're going to go, but first we need to move to agenda item three, our consent agenda. Pass that first and then we will vote on our opening plans.
Laura, was there?
Yeah, I think we have public comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Yes, uh, public comment. It looks like we have Mr. Wharton is the only one that signed up for public comment. Mr. Wharton, are you ready to speak with the board? Is he here?
Probably take us a little while to unmute people, so.
Okay. And he is the only one that signed up for comment, correct, Heather?
Hello?
Hi, is this Josh?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um.
Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me. Um, I actually can't believe I'm the only person that signed up to speak at this, but um. I think that points out sort of some of the problems with online communication and reaching out to families in our community. But what I wanted to say is ultimately this is a risk versus reward. Decision. And uh, I think that Janet and Ruby did an excellent job of pointing out. The rewards of in-person learning. And I think that there's been some minimization as I've watched this meeting about the risks of doing an online. Um. Learning situation and how much our community and how much our kids and how much our students suffer if we do online learning. And I just wanted to put it out there that I think that although there are risks to the community and although there are risks to our teachers, how important it is. That our kids are back in school with professionals. Um, every day who know how to teach them and how to um, help them grow. And uh, I just wanted to put that out there because I know that right now there's a general movement, both in the media, national media. And um, you know, it's more science becomes available that we should do, stick with in-person learning. And I think that we are. Minimizing the importance of having our kids back in school and hoping that we can do a decent job of teaching them at home, when in fact, we all know that it's not going to be good, as good as it would be if they're at school. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Josh. All right, um, moving on to agenda item three, our consent agenda. On our agenda item list, would a board member like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda?
I. Actually, I have a question about that. I know that in some of the policies, there are some places where we need to make some decisions, set some dates, put some names in. Are we going to do that at the second reading or? Or? What's the plan for those?
Yeah, it's like the approval of the support of the twenty twenty-one education process, we would be passing with this consent agenda. It is only the first reading of the legally required policies. So that's just us reviewing them. Uh, at our work session, we can talk in depth about those policies. And the July special meeting minutes.
Yeah, there, after you see those, it would be recommendations of what, what some of those things would be, but you kind of you see them till you have that discussion. So on the first reading that. You would have that opportunity to ask those questions.
Yeah. Do you have any questions about the legally required policies at this moment?
I don't have questions about the policies. My question is about the schedule and making sure that we're going to have a chance to discuss. Like I said, the names, the dates, some of the choices that need to be made before we approve those. But if that's. What is going to happen at the eleventh, then I'm happy. With that.
Yeah, usually with the first reading, we review them and look at them. Second meeting, we have in-depth conversations if you have questions or concerns about them.
Yeah, and some of that is just uh, information as it's coming on and, and we have to make some decisions on those things. So usually we would have that, um, but right now. With a webinar I just had yesterday, some of those changed. So I put them off to what, exactly what person would be going in place. So you are correct on that.
Okay, so we will do, fill in the blanks where there are blanks on the eleventh.
Now, they will be there. They will be filled out by the eleventh and then you can.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Would a board member like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda? Uh, you're on mute. All right. May I have a second?
A second.
Heather, roll call, please.
Mr. Adams?
Hi.
Mrs. Capo?
Hi.
Mrs. Case?
Hi.
Mr. Kushner? And Mrs. Wolf?
Hi.
The ayes have the vote, vote and the motion is approved. Now moving on to agenda item four, our action items, four point one, our board's decision and direction of the school opening plan. Would a board member like to make a motion on the board decision and direction of the school opening plan?
Are we ready for a motion or do we? Want to have any, does anybody have any further comments or discussion?
We'll have discussion after we have a motion made. Eric, did you want to make a motion?
Uh, it was. Excuse me? Yeah, I was going to move uh, to. Like to make a motion to approve going to phase one.
Okay. And would a board member like to second that motion?
I'll second.
All right, now let's open this up for discussion now. This is our time to kind of talk about how we feel about everything that was presented to us. And how we feel about moving to phase one for school opening. Who would like to start?
For me, I've been uh, been talking to community members, parents, um, retired teachers, uh, former students and. In the process of today's meeting, I've also been keeping like a Franklin ledger. And this one's a little bit more complicated. Just because there's a pro and con for phase one, pro and con for phase two. Uh, I was certainly hoping for more public comment input uh, to then weight those uh, any one of those four columns as well. I know for me in the parents I've either heard from or heard through with, you know, relations with my son Benjamin. Uh. All but one, one was on the fence. The other three were unquestionably going with um, online going through Florida Virtual, actually. Um. I've heard uh, from, let's see, then I've heard from one other parent now that was certainly in favor of uh, in-person. Looking at that, uh, keeping track of uh, pros and cons from what I've heard from the administration team and Sheldon. Uh, for me, I see the con list being greater on phase two. And the pro list being greater on page one. That's what helps lead me to that decision of thinking that safety. Has to be in my mind, it's very important. As Janet brought up, it's also has to keep it in balance with everything else in the education we're providing. Um, it seems like phase two has more flexibility to it. Uh, in that we can provide the full range uh, more easily or more directly. Uh, but yet uh, phase one does have some flexibility, especially if we work through. Uh, being able to address that needs uh, kids and other um, special needs. If we went through with the phase one and online. And that's what tends to make me uh. More heavily weight, I guess, going to phase one. With the idea being that we go through our first uh, quarter approximately. Um. And then moving from there. We know while we couldn't tell the future, there was a decent chance that we might have to go to phase one, even if we started in phase two. Uh, there would be a disruption in learning that way. I think the board and our community is faced with a, almost a no-win situation. We have a. I, well, I unquestionably think that uh, in-person learning is by far the best. I've done that my entire life. Uh, and. It's unquestionably better, but I have to balance that in my position on the board with the safety of the children. And I think that we can address education for our children. And. Still take care of them and their safety by not returning to school.
Thank you, Eric. Kristy, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you so much. Um, this is, this is hard. Um, this is a really hard decision that um, I really don't take lightly. I feel like I'm going to get emotional over it, but. Um, hearing from all of our administrators today. And all the people on the board and Sheldon, one thing is evident to me that. The people of Estes Park that are in our school system care about these kids so deeply. And so none of the decisions that we make obviously um. Are not going to burden us and we know the importance of being in person. Um, you know, we don't have to go over statistics and data. We know how important it is. We know um, that school is sometimes a safe haven for children. Um, and it's important for them to be there, but the information that came down from the health department yesterday. Really changes things. And so it's a decision of whether we're going to be ahead of the eight ball. And we're going to go in online and um. Start that way with, with a very high chance that it's going to get there at some point anyway. And we're going to be scrambling to, to start from where we left off. Um, and I think until we get that information from the health department where we're going to be able to. Um, find out who has it and, and stop the spread and all of those things. I just don't see how we could do it. Phase two effectively and safely. Um. And. The lives of our students and their families is of the utmost importance. Um, so it's just, it's a tough decision. I'm, I'm. I'm saddened that we have to do this, but I do think that it is. The safest way to move forward. And I just want to thank all of our administrators. You guys are such rock stars. Hearing you guys talk today, it just takes my breath away of the planning and um, the knowledge and. All the things that have gone into both phase two and phase one. Um. It just really blows me away. You guys are just so awesome. You love our kids and we are so thankful for you. And um, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kristy. Danielle?
Yeah, I would echo what Christie's just said about the work that has gone into this all summer. There's been. An incredibly steep learning curve. You guys have all, you know, in the past few months become. Well-informed on topics that I'm sure most of you had not. You know, spent a lot of time thinking about this previously. None of you are infectious disease experts to my knowledge. This is all new for all of us. I'm. I want to reemphasize that. We all want what's best and safest for kids. We all know that being in the classroom is really the best. Place for so many of our families, so many of our kids. I'm. I recognize that there are huge equity challenges that going to a full online model would present for us, but I do feel confident that. You know, we're up to the task. I think there are some mountains to climb in terms of communication, in terms of making sure we're getting good feedback, timely feedback. I'm getting it from all of our families, not just the ones who, you know, are the loudest voices, but. I do think that we're up to that task. I think that I'm, you know, we've got a little bit of time here now. If we make a decision here today to really start reaching out to families and. And asking them what they need, what supports would be most helpful. And gathering that data. I, you know, for the past six months, this has been weighing on me and I have been hoping and hoping and hoping that we were going to be in a position. To go back to online education or to in-person education this fall. And it's heartbreaking that this is, you know, the discussion we're having to have at this point, but. I just can't in good conscience send staff and students back knowing that. If a case came into our school, we wouldn't be able to nail it down and to contain the spread effectively. And the implications of that could be, could be tragic. Um, you know, the health and safety of our staff and our students has to be our number one priority. And then secondary to that is getting them back in person as soon as possible. I, I am confident that this administrative team and our teachers. Are going to do everything in their power to overcome those equity challenges and to provide an excellent educational experience, but. I can't in good conscience send kids back, send teachers back to full in-person right now.
Thank you, Danielle. I guess it's my turn now. Um. Uh, Kristy, I'm with you. I'm very, very emotional about all this. Sleepless nights. Uh, cried quite a few tears over this because it's also complicated and. Uh, Josh Wharton hadn't, had mentioned risk versus reward. And on a personal note, I've been on the board now for seven years. And I have been to nine funerals uh, related to students or families of students in our district over the past seven years. And. That's very real to me. I don't want anybody to get sick or die uh. Related to being exposed to this virus. This, I'm a believer in safety, science and research. And what came out yesterday about the contact uh, tracing, uh, what the county and the state. Is not where it needs to be. Testing is not where it needs to be. And I think that rushing to open our doors, I would hate to be the school district that takes that risk and we lose one life. We lose one life of a child, of a teacher, of a staff or their family members. Uh, all of us are parents. Uh, I've got my elderly parents living with us, you know, this is my tribe also, you know, I'm worried about everybody, but. I'm also worried about my own tribe and I'm worried about the teachers and I've heard a lot of concerns and I feel for them. Uh, our neighboring districts, uh, Pooter Thompson, Saint Vrain, and I believe Boulder Valley as of last night have decided to go online for the beginning of the opening of schools. What we do does not affect them very much, but what they do affects us. And so I, I'm. Friends and I work with those board members on all of those boards. And we're all going, they're much bigger districts than us, but we all have the same concerns and the same issues. Um, this isn't a forever all year-long decision. It's just how we're going to start off the year. I feel very strongly that if we started. The year in person, we would have to go online almost immediately anyway. Uh, that's just what the science is saying. That's what the numbers are saying. So I, I do definitely support the phase one, starting uh, the school year online and then hopefully we'll be able to transition. At the right time when it is the safest to face two. Uh, once again, safety and the lives of our children and the lives of our community are number one to me. And if we. Make the wrong decision here, it could definitely devastate our wonderful community and I'm not willing to do that. Any other comments or questions before we go to a vote?
Yes, I wanted also as I review my, my ledger here and go through this, that uh. Uh. I was torn between uh, uh, in-person learning uh, and doing online. And I was probably. Probably even heavily leaning towards the in-person. Uh, as we're seeing with um, COVID and, and this pandemic, uh, things change quickly. Hearing the inability uh, of the county to be able to meet testing needs in a um, very quick and timely manner. Which is like Sheldon was saying, a really important leg of uh, safety for the kids. Which was, is what really. Chipped me over. Um, hearing from administrators, knowing that teachers want in, uh, in-person learning. They want the kids in school. Of course, having some anxiety over their exposure because the teachers are going to have the more exposure probably than the kids within having to rotate through schools, having so many different kids through the school. And. Weighing all that out, that's what helps, uh, would help me uh. I guess finally make the decision to go with the phase one.
All right. Any more comments from our board members? All right, let's take it to a vote.
Could I, could I add something just um, before?
Yes, absolutely.
Just to make sure, um, so it's some, some clarity. I'm going to share my screen again. Um, and so uh, try to make this clear because I think it was emphasized by all of us. Our goal is to have in-person learning.
Our goal is to have in person learning the best we can. And so level one of what we're going to cloud school remote for all. Opportunities for one on one, small group, interpersonal learning. I think we can do that safely because what we can do is bring you in a per a group and. And very small and then we can not see them again for maybe a week. Therefore, you have the distant, the times to do whatever we needed to do in that. And also you have that group that is identified and we can keep that isolated. So. I think under the even the testing issues, we can do some things there that are very, very safe and ways to do that in ways. And then continue to do the remote academy. I just wanted to make sure that that included. Some opportunities for our our administration and staff to work. With groups to provide the best education we can.
All right, and that is in your phase one proposal, correct?
And our phase one, I mean, I think it the idea is that we're going to have, you know. A lot of lists under this as we develop it, and I just want that permission that we're able to do that. The idea is that we are going to try to to go online. For the most part, and then blend hybrid backwards from there. And so give us some flexibility in that.
All right. Thank you, Sheldon. Are we ready for a vote? All right, Heather, roll call, please.
Mr. Adams. Mrs. Capo. Mrs. Case. Mr. Kushner. And Mrs. Wolf.
All right, the ayes have the vote and the motion is passed. Moving on to agenda item upcoming meetings and designations, our next work session will be August eleventh from two to five. Not sure yet if we're going to be able to do that in person or in Zoom. I guess what is whatever is safest for us. And our next regular meeting is August twenty fourth. And again, that time and place will be determined depending on safety. Moving on to agenda item five, other, anybody else have any other things to say before we wrap this meeting up? No? Agenda item six, adjournment. Would a board member like to make a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So move.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for everybody who has joined us. This is our biggest Zoom, actually, board meeting probably ever. So thank you, everybody.